Also has a festival schedule, so it's a little bit tight. So we're going to try to keep things moving along today. We're going to go right to voters and taxpayers. If there is anyone who would like to address the commission today, please come to the podium and begin by stating your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute rule, which will be tight today. If under those terms and conditions, anyone would like to address us, you may do so now.
Good morning. My name is Scott Barr. I live in a Manta Township in Swope Road. Had to clear some ones out of the way this morning to get here. In addition to being a seventh-generation resident of Amanda Township, I'm also an educator, 37 years in the Taze Valley District, and getting ready to start my 11th year of Ohio Christian University. I teach composition. And I'd like to do a little critique of the piece of writing that appeared in The Washington Post on Sunday, written by Jeff Stein, who was here at the meeting two weeks ago. The article is entitled "Small Town GOP Officials Are Torn Over Biden's Clean Energy Cash." So if I may, as a composition teacher, let me do a little critique of the article here. It's always interesting what the lead is in an article like this. He leads his article with several paragraphs about Tony Zartman, who was here a couple of weeks ago, who was a former commissioner in Paulding County and now works with the Ohio Land and Liberty Coalition as field specialist, which, by the way, is a pro-solar development group. And the very first paragraph, Tony Zartman mentions that he has heard several pieces of misinformation about solar and alternative energy developments, including he said that he's been told that solar farms would be overrun by rats that would torment neighbors. So that's an interesting notion again, but in this whole issue, which I've described before, it's like a wire with points on both sides. We need to be careful about that kind of misinformation. We hope that we're not disseminating any of that. Later in the article, which Jeff Stein is the economics reporter for The Washington Post, focusing on the White House. So understandably, he has a political slant to his story. There's a lot of ideological discussion, red-blue statements. I thought it was interesting later on in the article that he, and I quote, says, "Solar panel farms can stretch for hundreds of thousands of acres on previously green pastures. Construction can affect the tilling farms need for drainage." Which I think he spells that T-I-L-L-I-N-G, tilling. I think that he means tiling. We talk to him quite a lot about the problems with tiling. So one critique that I would make of this article is that overall, as a city person, he does not understand, the article does not develop the idea of the interecology of agriculture and the land communities.
Sir, if you would conclude your remarks, I'm very sorry.
Okay, and that's fine. And I will say, Commissioner Davis, that enjoyed the pictures and the interview that he did with you at the end of the article. And I think that that's commendable for an individual to make those kind of energy-conscious and cost-conscious choices. However, that doesn't mean that our county should upend our agricultural communities with thousands of acres of industrial utility-scale solar factories. I give him a C+ on his piece of work. Thank you.
My grade would be slightly less than that. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good morning. I'm Melissa Hoover, 7710 Cattail Road in Pleasantville. I just wanted to update the commissioners, although there's a high chance that you already know about this. But last Wednesday, Walnut Township trustees hosted a hearing regarding solar. We had over 100 people show up. In an informal survey, we, I would say, we had 98% of the attendees there were against solar in Walnut Township. I don't know what other townships are doing at this moment, but I wanted to let you know that Walnut Township appears to be very much against putting solar on farmland. As per the Washington Post article, I must say that it was a great disappointment that they decided to make this a Republicans versus Democrats argument, because certainly, solar on prime farmland affects all of us equally and isn't a partisan issue. It's very much an agricultural issue at this point in time. And others may also argue that it is a food security, and obviously, if you can't feed your people, you can't protect your people, issue. So I just thought I would mention that. Good, you've probably been missing me. I haven't been up here in a while.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, Ben.
I have something here to share with you this morning. And you know what's going on in the world, and especially in the United States? From a pastor out in California, Dr. Dave Jeremiah. He said, "Lord, help me find the message in the mess." And then he lists five things here that are important. There's no mess that God can't handle. No mess is forever. No mess is a surprise to God. A mess is a place where only God can work. You are never alone. God is with you. I would like to follow that up with a comment about Ohio's constitution right now is an easy way for outside interests. The interest of money coming in before an election is tremendous. And California ranks number one having outside interests trying to sway elections. Ohio is number two. And this first election coming up, issue one, is to help Ohio constitution remain strong. So there's different things coming out that kind of confuse people, the way it's being stated. So much outside interest pressuring to say no. Thus, of us as a study that we want issue one to pass. This is going to help us in the future, too. So it's vital that we do pass issue number one. Shall we pray? Lord, as we come before you this morning, we know that there's many things in the world that troubles a lot of people. A lot of it is misunderstanding. A lot of it is not taking the time to study the issues and look at what is important. So we need to take a closer look at all things that we're voting on and be aware. And we also need to remind ourselves that we need to turn to you, Lord, because you're not being surprised by anything. And you will help us, those that turn to you for strength and guidance. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. You know, each week I'm up here, I think, well, there can't be any more that's any worse coming out about this COVID thing. But it seems like there is. A study found that COVID shots killed people. And it's killed, the report itself is killed. Liberty Council, which you've heard me speak of before with Matt Staber, he has reported on this, and he has said it's published in The Lancet, but it was quickly censored within 24 hours after its publication because it showed clear evidence that the COVID-19 shots were responsible for many deaths. And of the 325 autopsies reviewed, the study revealed that the COVID shots directly caused or significantly contributed to 74% of those deaths. Next, why doesn't the JEFCA recommendation line up with the IAARC classification or the WHO guideline, the Mayew-Hugh guideline, not to use non-sugar sweeteners? One possible answer is, at least six out of 13 JECFA panel members have ties to the International Life Sciences Institute, a longtime Coca-Cola front group. And both the chair and the vice chair of the JECFA panel have ties to the ILSI. Nice on that first page is CDC. COVID shots caused 338 times increase in cancer and AIDS. The next is the US military using potentially misleading COVID data, thanks to these screw-ups. Now, I have to ask a question here. Look at the persons in the medical field who have lost their jobs or their lives for revealing the truth many months ago about the misinformation to scare the general public. And look at the immense trauma that this wicked deceit, and that's what it is, wicked deceit, has brought to many persons' lives and marriages, as well as the health. Next, the scan continues. MSM claims COVID is back and tells people to get new injections. NBC claims it. Oh, it's not the real medical fields, are they? Next, talking about the hemato-ho-htical, blood-related claims. They're up 522% above the trend in '22. Also, 10 problems with the vaccines and 10 solutions. And with these papers, I wish you would look up these websites because there is trouble with the vaccines and 10 sentences. Just look those up. And a proposed solution to the trouble with vaccines in 10 more sentences. Look them up. And with that, I thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be back. Wanted to let you all know and invite anybody who is available to come. Wednesday, August 2nd, that's next week, we are doing the groundbreaking for our 150th house. That will be on 325 East Sixth Avenue at 8:30 a.m. Try to make it early so people can swing in quickly before they go to work, if not pop in. But if you can't make it to that, there will be plenty of other opportunities to see what we've got going on there. And Pleasantville should be wrapping up shortly. We are finishing a few things there. I would say the next three weeks, hopefully. But we've got a lot of really good groups coming out. I just found out AEP will be there Friday, so that's awesome. And we've had other groups like Claypool and that out. So that will go. And then as soon as kids are back in school, Career Center will continue to move forward. So we are moving right along in all the things we're doing. And we'd greatly appreciate anybody and everybody that wants to come out to celebrate with the homeowner as we break ground for the next one. Thank you.
So much. Anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? On behalf of the commission, we do thank you all for coming. Anything on legal? So, on legal, just letting folks know, one of the questions that the commission has received for some time now has to do with the issue of our ability or willingness to ban industrial solar projects, either completely or in certain areas. And I just wanted folks to know that we're certainly looking at that. We have some preliminary indications that for certain projects under Senate Bill 52, if they met certain requirements prior to the passage of Senate Bill 52, we may not have the ability to influence those projects. But we're awaiting a fuller legal analysis on that. And that certainly will heavily influence our conduct as it relates to that particular question. Also, the commission has retained an environmental engineer to give us independent guidance as to not just some of the concerns that have been expressed by the opponents, but also as a result of some of the statements that have been made by the proponents. We just felt it would be prudent on our part to get some independent analysis of those issues and concerns. So I know those folks that are interested, concerned about the solar issues may at times think that perhaps we're not listening or that we're not paying attention to things that are being said, and we're not doing anything. And I just thought it was maybe a good time to just give you a little window on the fact that we are actually listening and paying attention to these things. Some mention was made of the Washington Post article today. I'm not going to go through the article and give my own personal opinion about things that were said and things that weren't said, and the way things were put together on that. Other than, as I have said before, I will say again, my personal choices about saving money at my residence have nothing to do with the discussion about industrial solar. That's just me doing math. And as the price of electricity has skyrocketed, the math for my personal decisions has got nothing but get better. But that, its inclusion in the article is strange to me. But in any event, I just want you all to know that those two things, I do not see a relationship between them.
Administration update. All right. Good morning. Now, the administrative portal is out today, so I'm filling in for the American Rescue Plan update. We filed the second quarterly report. Currently, we have $30 million that we've received approximately. $28.6 million has been appropriated. $14.6 is expended. $5.1 million encumbered or obligated. All of the projects continue to be moving forward. And we look forward to getting updates on those periodically from the project recipients. State of the county, Bennett, you want to put up the notice there? State of the county is, the Lancaster Fairfield Chamber of Commerce is accepting registrations for the 2023 State of the County Address. Registration is $25 and includes the lunch. The event will be held at the Wigwam Event Center in Pickerington on August 22nd. That's a notice that's been going out. That's going to be in the United Way newsletter and some other newsletters so that we can drive attendance. And you can use that QR code there to get you to the spot to register for the event.
So it'll be- QR stands for quick response.
Correct.
Correct.
I really like the notice because I get to be in the center and at the top. And I just, to me, it just makes a lot of sense. I love what you've done with it.
We can't take credit for that. That's Bennett and Rochelle put that together. So it's a nice notice. It's a nice notice. So moving on from the notice. The 2023 Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Grant. Over $2.4 million in grants from Governor Dewine's Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Fund have been awarded to 32 participants. One of those is the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. It's going to receive over $200,000 as part of that grant program. And the funds are awarded to help identify high-level drug traffickers, dismantle large drug trafficking organizations, interrupt flow of money and drugs from international cartels, and prevent the sale of illegal narcotics to those suffering from substance use disorder. We're very thankful that the sheriff's office was awarded that grant. August 8th, 2023 Special Election. On August 8th, Ohio voters will have a chance to vote on issue one, which is elevating standards to qualify for an initiated constitutional amendment and to pass any constitutional amendment. That's a bit of a mouthful. The 2023 statewide issue report includes official ballot language, explanations, and arguments for and against issue one and can be reviewed on the Secretary of State's website at voteohio.gov. Highlights of resolutions, would it be okay to move on to that?
Yes, it is okay.
All right. List of administrative approvals are contained in the review packet. Today, there are 13 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting. One of those is a resolution authorizing proclamations for Child Support Awareness Month. Wear green. The International Overnose Awareness Day. We have representatives from the Adam Board here today. And the National Wellness Month. And we have a representative from Human Resources here to accept that proclamation. We have a resolution to approve appropriation of funds for an upgrade to the 91 radio recorder. John, did you have anything on that?
No.
Okay. Resolution authorizing the repayment of an advance from Common Pleas to the General Fund. A resolution to authorize the creation of a four-way stop at the intersection of Basel Western Road and Pickerington Road. Jeremiah, did you have anything you'd like to add to that?
So that is the third stop sign in the area that we've converted to a flashing stop sign. It's one of the measures that ODOT outlines in their process of working through an intersection as it grows in average daily traffic and park problems arise. That's one of the bigger steps in there. Beyond that, we'd be looking at traffic light and stuff. So with the growth we're having, we expect, you know, one of these days, probably sooner than later, that there will be enough traffic for that. But right now, it's a safety concern. We've had success with them at Pickerington and Winchester Road. We've also had success there at Allen and Basel Western. So that's what we're doing. It had enough accidents when we looked at the intersection. It's had enough accidents recently to qualify in ODOT's criteria for that level of mitigation.
Questions? Resolution authorizing the county engineer's office to purchase a Ford F-550 truck with stellar T-Max aluminum service body. We also have a resolution amending a previous resolution and allowing for the addition of a prohibition for the use of ByteDance TikTok pursuant to the USDA lease at the Ag Center. Was there anything you had to add to that, John?
Just a link sent requirement from the USDA. So no TikTok.
Yes, got that. Got that. Thank you. So calendar review and invitations received. Rochelle?
The South Leaking Water Conservancy District meeting is today at 6:00 p.m. at the Hefer Municipal Complex. And the Bremen Chamber Lunch is Thursday, July 27th, at noon at the Bremen United Methodist Church. The following invitations were received. Flyers Pizza and Subs is having a ribbon-cutting ceremony today at 11:30 a.m., and that is at 8220 Refugee Road in Pickerington. A reminder to wear green, August 2nd. We have several with green on today to help remind us that next Wednesday, we should be wearing it in support of Child Support Awareness Month. The Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce has sent an email announcing the 2023 State of the County Address, which is August 22nd at 11:30 at the Wigwam Event Center. Commissioners, you have all been registered for this event. The First Annual Fairfield County Senior Expo and Health Fair will be August 25th at the Fairfield County Fairgrounds at Sands Building. United Way of Fairfield County will host their Community Care Day and Campaign Kickoff on September 13th at 7:45 a.m. at the Ohio University Lancaster Gymnasium. And WLOH, the Wolf, will celebrate their 75th anniversary on November 11th at the Mill Event Center. And that is an announcement, the time will be forthcoming.
Rochelle, if we could just pause for a moment-
Certainly.
Before we go on to correspondence. Inadvertently, we overlooked hearing briefly from Bart, who has just a brief update on budgetary issues, please.
Yes, we just wanted to provide an update on the July sales tax, which came in just under $2.5 million, which was up about $103,000, or about 4.3% over the previous year for July. That's all it is.
Sure. And I just wanted to take a moment and see if my colleagues had any questions or comments on the budgetary issues.
I'm still surprised we're up 4%. Which is good numbers.
Yeah. Bart, thank you for doing that. Bart and I had a chance to meet this morning and go over those numbers. And as always, we are continuing to monitor those very diligently. Rochelle, back to correspondence, please.
My apologies, Bart, for jumping in front of you there.
You did. It's not you. It was me.
The Commissioner's Office received the following correspondence. A 2023 Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Grants Notice from the Office of the Governor that Mr. Porter just spoke about. A United Way News Release dated July 19th titled, "United Way of Fairfield County Announces New CEO." A letter from Secretary of State Frank LaRose regarding the August 8th special election. A press release from the Office of the County Auditor dated July 19th titled, "County Auditor's Office Participates in Statewide Parcel Project." The Palmer Energy 2024 Estimated Electric Budget. A memo from County Auditor Dr. Carrie Brown dated July 20th regarding the top three categories of county revenue, ratio of bonded debt to the county's estimated true value, and the Auditor Office's new Financial Systems Director, Bev Hoskinson. A notice of a public hearing for the rezoning of Zero Dawson Court in Carroll. I'm sorry, that is Zero Dawson Court in Carroll. The zoning hearing will be today, July 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Greenfield Township Fire Department Carroll. The notice was dated July 19th and received yesterday by the Commissioner's Office. A copy of a letter from EDF Renewable to Walnut Township Zoning Commission dated July 18th regarding the regulation of solar projects, 50 megawatts and greater. Two letters from Fairfield County residents regarding solar projects. A letter from the Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging regarding Ohio residents and the Biennium 2024-2025 State Budget. A news release from Visit Fairfield County, Ohio titled, "Wands and Wizards Weekend Returns to Fairfield County." And the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities July 2023 Imagine Newsletter. That is it?
So we have commissioners.
All right. Thank you. Under old business, I have nothing to report. Commissioner Levysey under old business.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fix under old business.
Thank you.
Under new business, just one comment, I guess. In the correspondence, there was a reference to Palmer Energy's 2024 Estimated Electric Budget. Just wanted to touch on that for a second. That estimate had to do with county facilities that are fed by American Electric Power and indicated that in 2024, our costs for those buildings will exceed $1 million for electricity. A number of county buildings are fed by South Central Power. And I met with STAB this morning, and they are assembling the data associated with an estimate for the South Central county buildings. And then we'll put those two numbers together, the potentially north of $1 million for the cost of electricity for the AEP buildings. Then we'll get the costs assembled for the cost of the South Central buildings. And the Commissioner's Office will begin in earnest examining all of those costs for all county facilities with a rather significant concern that the demand for electricity will continue to rise. The supply for electricity may continue to be compromised, and the price of electricity may continue to skyrocket. And so we want to look down the horizon on what may be approaching a couple of million dollars the annual costs for electricity with an eye towards what, if anything, we could or should be doing to ameliorate the effects of that dramatic cost. to ameliorate the effects of that dramatic cost. Commissioner Levysey, under New Business.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fix, under New Business.
Thank you.
Brandon, how are you today? Good. Always good to see you. Anything you'd like to share? All right. Bonson, how are you?
Uh, we're in the process of wrapping up second half collection.
Jeremiah, you're tired.
Yep.
Right? Is there anything else?
Well, we didn't have anybody scheduled last night, obviously. And we did have two pretty good-sized crews that came in. We packed together one time, then split up at different times depending on the magnitude of what we were cleaning up. But they did a really good job, got in there, no questions asked.
I did hear that there were multiple streets, I guess, in the city that were adversely impacted by trees down and things like that. Did we have similar situations in the county as well?
Yes.
And then while we're on that point of the storms and the response to those storms, John Coches, where are we on buildings? Were any buildings adversely impacted?
This one had a little bit of a flooding issue this morning from a backup drain. JFS had a leak in the roof that we're assessing today by drone. No one can find the Engineers' Office because their sign is now gone. Same with the Liberty Center. So, yeah, a little bit.
What are we thinking out there? Was it straight line winds?
Yeah. The only report I have is the airport, 48 mile an hour gusts is what the airport registered. I don't really have a weather station in the area that probably had a higher.
Did I hear there was water at the Liberty Center as well, or is that not?
No, not at the Liberty Center. The Liberty Center was the sign.
Okay. All right.
Did the Shoop Loop sign make it?
I was tuned.
That's great.
We can only hope.
Very.
All right. Any other thing significant in terms of buildings?
Again, you know, the road crews, that they have to go out and do that. And we actually safely evacuated a concert last night too in a quick fashion because that storm incoming.
And I know this building this morning was flooded because I walked through it. But any significant damage, particularly, say, for example, IT? Was there IT above the water on it?
Not that. That was just too much debris in the drainage.
Um, real quick, I just wanted to say thanks to Bart. He's been helping us work through some of the issues that we're trying to clean up with the Drainage Maintenance Districts, helping us keep that on track and get that simplified so it's easy for my office, the Commissioner's Office, and the Auditor's Office to be able to use that data as we continue to work forward to the picture of what a stormwater utility looks like.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here, Jeremiah. Rachel Elsie, how are you today?
Good. How are you?
Good. Good to see you back. Anything from the Auditor's Office?
I know the memo was included in the review packet. If you have any questions, I answer them and I'll just call you.
Is there any other issue or item that anybody would like to bring the attention to the Commission at this time? Hearing none. If you would, please rise, if you are able, and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless. Thank you. Shell, do we have any announcements?
We do have one announcement. In two weeks from today, which is August 8th, we have an evening meeting at the Wigwamun Vet Center, and that will be at 7:00 PM.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the approval for the regular minutes for the July 18th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes. And with that, we'll move on to the approval of roundtable minutes for July 18th, 2023.
So moved.
Discussion, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Minutes pass 3-0. From the Commissioners, we have Resolution 2023-7.25.a, Resolution authorizing the approval of proclamations.
There are Commissioners, I mean, items A and B.
Second.
Discussion?
Want to do that now?
Yeah. What we have to say?
All right. On the proclamations, we have the Child Support folks here for Awareness Month, wear green, August 2nd. Is that right?
Yep.
All right.
Love to have you folks join us if you would.
Patrick and Cory's crew.
Yep. Okay. Hang on. I'm sorry.
Goodbye, Karen.
So my name's Karen.
Well, speaking. Tell them I choose. She wasn't allowed to appear in that speech. Your brains are old.
Great for beauty.
Yeah. So on behalf of the Commission, I'm not going to read the proclamations, but I will share with you, both in our role as Commissioners and for some of us in our private lives, the role that child support enforcement plays is pretty significant. My parents separated when I was four, and there was a very lengthy, multi-decade dispute that I guess ultimately got resolved. But for those of us who were children of those environments where it becomes necessary to get that level of support, please know how much we appreciate your efforts on behalf of really mostly the children that need that support to have some semblance of the life that they deserve. So on behalf of the Commission, we thank you all for that and join you in proclaiming this August as child support month. So Patrick, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you. I'm just, you know, as we do every year, just want to thank the Commissioners for their support and encouragement month after month, year after year, and the community as well. One of the things I just thought I would touch on because it's new to us is that our transport enforcement agency is now fully staffed. So I know there's been some challenges, you know, around the state and the country with employment. And, you know, we're constantly voted a great place to work, Fairfield County. And I think that really shows with the fact that we've got a great, fully-staffed team. Jim Neets is our managing attorney for our legal department. He knew within the last year, and he's really done a great job with our legal department that was understaffed for a bit. You know, Jim worked two and three jobs at a time till we got back on our feet. But Jim's done a great job with that team. And again, we are in a really good place right now. So just want to thank the county Commissioners for their support.
So maybe if you'll just, Mr. Fix, if you can share that with Patrick there from the picture and get a little picture here. So hurry this moment.
We'll do two. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have the floats for International Overdose Awareness Day, which is August 31st. And with us is Tony Ashton from the Adam Board.
So the Commissioner's Office gets reports more frequently than we would like regarding the statistics of people who are dying from overdoses. I'm frustrated to even use the word statistics because I think it's so much more important than that than the lives of the people who are impacted by these drugs and the families that are torn asunder by what they experience in going through that. So we are trying to bring ever more awareness to those problems and trying to find solutions wherever we can. And so we do think it's appropriate to take a moment, recognize August 31st as Overdose Awareness Day in Fairfield County. We have with us today Tony Ashton, and I wondered if you might want to say a few words.
So I just want to say thank you so much for the kindness of sport. In Fairfield County, in 2022, we lost 58 people to overdose deaths. And to have an event on August 31st to remember those that have died from overdose and then also to celebrate those who are in recovery. So thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you for being with us. Commissioner Levysey, if you may, hold that for the photograph here.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Tony, I'm happy to be here. We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Finally, we have National Wellness Month, and Amber Lee Hanum from HR, who is also the wellness coordinator, is here to accept.
So as folks may or may not know, particularly over the last few years, Fairfield County as an entity has really kind of dug in on this issue of wellness and tried to find ways and opportunities to provide encouragement to our employees and their families, and then also opportunities for treatment in those areas where they do need help with that. So we've kind of put our money where our mouth is, I think, on this issue. And I wondered if you might like to share a few words when they take the presentation.
I'm very happy and appreciative of the services that the county offers as far as virtual pulse and well beats, as well as our very helpful and lucrative AEP program through HOP. So very passionate about supporting that. And if anybody has any questions about any of that, please feel free to reach out to myself, anybody HR, and I'll just... Thank you.
Well, on behalf of the Commission, we appreciate the work that you're doing and everybody in HR is overseeing that program.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
If we'll crush it here, Commissioner Fix suggests we take a picture this time.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Further discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Court of Common Please, Resolution 2023-7.25.c, Resolution authorizing the approval of repayment of advance to the General Fund, Fund Number 8271, 2021 ISP Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call a roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2023-7.25.d, A resolution to create a four-way stop at the intersection of Basel Western Road, CR 13, and Pickerington Road, CR 20.
So moved. I'm sorry. Under Fairfield County Engineer, I mean, items D and E.
Second.
Discussion? Best nominees in review. Further discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2023-7.25.f, A resolution amending supporting documentation and adding FAR Clause 52.204-27, Prohibition on ByteDance Covered Application for Resolution 2023-7.18.d, authorizing the approval of lease amendment number eight with the United States of America for office space at 831 College Avenue Suites A and B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Didn't we approve this last time?
Yeah, we did. It was just we failed to include this amendment and until after the lease was given.
Thank you.
This is just the adding of that amendment and nothing else.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2023-7.25.g, A resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of birth certificates paid to Fairfield County Health Department as a memo expenditure for Fund Number 2072 Public Children's Services.
Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I mean, items G, H, I, and J.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-7.25.k, A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund Number 2036, Department of Youth Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2023-7.25.l, A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for Sheriff's Office Fund 2027 Waits.
So moved.
Discussion? Please call a roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. Payment of Bills, Resolution 2023-7.25.m, A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levysey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for August 1st at 9:00 AM.
Just a thought I wanted to share before we conclude our meeting today. I've had the opportunity, as my family has, to enjoy a number of the festival events already that are going on. But one thing that struck me perhaps more than anything else so far is at the Andy Grammer Concert, which I don't know what the attendance was, but thousands, many thousands. What's that? 5,800. So there were big video screens, you know, for those of us who were, you know, sitting some distance from the performer. And down towards the front of the stage were just a crush of many young people. And as they were showing them on video, they knew the words to every song. And I don't know why it struck me, but seeing our young people just have a blast at a festival concert and enjoying that moment just really made me feel good. And I know there are lots of festival events, many of which are free for people to enjoy. It's kind of really the beginning of the season of festivals and opportunities for folks to enjoy things. I know Commissioner, I think all three of us really enjoy getting up to the Sweet Corn Festival, which is coming up up in Miller's Board. It's one of my favorites of the year. The Pickerington Palooza is coming up. Of course, the county fair is coming around the corner here in October. So I just wanted to share with folks that if you haven't had a chance to enjoy some of these things, I hope you get the chance to do that. It's just a really neat time in our county with a lot of neat things for folks to do, and I hope you get a chance to enjoy some of those. Any final thoughts, Commissioner Levysey?
Yeah, I go to the Sweet Corn Festival occasionally.
It's a short walk, isn't it?
It is a very short walk. You know, what you said, you know, the... You know what's really amazing about the Lancaster Festival? How that has grown to be such a large event and a fun event and supportive for many businesses that participate. So, but, you know, it's just a great community event to host this festival.
Mr. Fix, final thoughts?
Yeah, when you use the phrase "young people" in a sentence a couple of times, it makes it sound really old.
But when I saw that picture of me there earlier, it was another reminder that I am more aged and infirm than I used to be.
You know, the funniest thing about all that is that you weren't kidding about how happy you are to be front and center.
No, I prefer it.
Yeah. It's good. You're there, brother.
Anything important you'd like to share?
Um, we have an opportunity coming up about affordable housing. We're working on a partnership with the City of Lancaster. I don't want to get too far ahead of it because we're still in learning stages, but it seems like it's an opportunity... but it seems like it's an opportunity for us to walk the walk when it comes to workforce housing. So we're excited to continue to explore that opportunity and want to come.
I appreciate that, thank you. Is there any other issue, item that anybody would like to bring the attention to the Commission at this time? Here, none, I'll accept a motion. I got a motion ready in a second. All those in favor, see if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. The motion carries. The Commission is adjourned, and we do thank you all for coming. And we specifically thank you for your brevity today, given our tight schedule.